I'm going to call this adjourned session of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, we call the roll.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden is absent. Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
That, we have a quorum present. Councilmember Glidden is on city business, so she won't be joining us this evening. Excuse me, next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Move adoption?
The agenda has been moved and seconded. All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item is to explain why we called this meeting this evening, and it is to receive comment on the 2015 proposed budget, Mayor Hodges' 2015 proposed budget and tax levy, and also receive comment on the fiscal year 2015 coordinated plan, and then receive comment on the proposed water and sewer rates. So that will be the items that will be addressed this evening by the public. Next, I need a motion to suspend Council Rule 8, 2D, that to allow members of the public to address the council.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have several elected officials joining us here tonight, and I don't see any members of the Board of Estimate and Taxation right now. If I've missed somebody, forgive me, but we have two members of the Park Board, the Chair of the Park Board, Chairman Liz Wilensky, and Anita Tab. Oh, you're on the Board of Estimate and Taxation, I forgot that. So, we do have a Board of Estimate and Taxation. She's the Park Board's representative on the Board of Estimate and Taxation, so thank you for joining us this evening. Next item is, I should announce that in the corner of the council chambers there, Mr. Todd is there with raising his hand. He is the city assessor, so if anyone has questions about their valuation or a particular property, he is the gentleman to talk to, and he'd be happy to visit with you about a particular property. So feel free to talk to him if you need to. So the next item on our agenda then is public testimony, and we have a list of people that have signed up. I'm going to ask you to limit your comments to, oh, Mayor Hodges, excuse me, did you want to speak, Mayor Hodges? No? Okay. We have a list of people who have signed up to speak, and we're going to ask you to hold your comments to two minutes so that we can get through our list of people. The other thing is, it looks as I see buttons and that sort of thing, if people are here to support a particular speaker, you can go like this, and that tells us, gives us kind of a frame of how many people are here about a particular issue quietly, not clapping, but quietly. So, that's helpful. So, I have a list of people. If you're not on the list, signed up yet, you can go over to the city clerk, Mr. Casey Carl, at the end here and sign up. So we'll start, and I'm going to call two names, and the person that's the second, if they would come up and then be ready to speak at the podium, that'd be great. So the first person is Esther Van, second person Juanita Jensen. Ms. Van?
Esther?
Yeah.
Esther Van. Twin Cities Habitat. Nope? Okay, then, how about Juanita Jensen? And then after Juanita, Kat Van. Ms. Jensen. And would you please give your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Juanita Jensen. I reside at 3207 Oliver Avenue North. So, thank you councilmembers for hearing me, and councilmember President Ms. Johnson. I am here on behalf of Affordable Housing, and I'm asking you to support the $20 million for affordable and stable homes in Minneapolis. I am a Habitat homeowner. I have been a Habitat homeowner for 20 years. We have raised all five of our children in our house, and we currently reside there. You helped get our streetlights done over at Lucy Laney, and we just thought homeownership for anybody when it's affordable and they have an opportunity to raise a family, and to provide, not only just homeownership and stability, but you're offering an opportunity for your children to have a safe place to go, a safe place to call home, a place for your children to come home to, a school, a community. There's many opportunities that homeownership offers a family that can't normally afford a home, or having the opportunity to safety. So, I believe that this $20 million in voting and moving it forward for other families like me, that we are no longer in a position where we feel like we would be in dire straits, but there are many that are, and I think that this is something that would benefit so many families, not just on the north side, but throughout the city of Minneapolis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lee Mock is after Kat Van. Ms. Van?
My name is Kat Van, and I live at 3723 27th Avenue South in Minneapolis in the 12th Ward. And councilmember Andrew Johnson, I'd like to see you support $20 million in the Minneapolis budget for the continuum of housing. I'm actually here tonight as part of a broader coalition of advocates, of folks who share that sense of priority in housing that the person who spoke before me also mentioned. We've been, many of you have probably received flyers that we've been kind of laying out our case. I'm also here as part of a coalition of folks who are from communities of faith, who are passionate about ending homelessness and affordable housing in our community. And I think many of you may have already received some of the flyers that we've been putting together, expressing our individual views about why this is so important to have happen, how congregations are ready to step up and make this happen, how we are hoping, how we are praying that councilpeople step up and make this happen in the budget. We're hope-filled people. We believe that our city will thrive when adequate affordable housing is available. I had the opportunity last summer with folks from my congregation, we hosted three families who were experiencing homelessness, and they were hope-filled people. They had shelter while they were in the process of looking for permanent housing. And I remember one woman who had about eight children, she was just, she said, "I know we are going to get our Section 8 housing. I know we're going to have housing. I know it's all going to happen, and it's so great to have so many of you supporting us." So that's the kind of support we're looking for from you. We believe the city of Minneapolis can make this happen. We believe that $20 million in the Minneapolis budget will make home happen in Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee Mock, and then followed by Jeff Washburn. Mr. Mock?
My name is Lee Mock. I live at 3243 East Callum Parkway in Minneapolis. I speak to you this evening, first of all, as Chair of the Board of Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative, and secondly, as a citizen of Minneapolis who's concerned about the lack of affordable housing for working families. A shortage of livable and affordable housing is creating a serious problem for thousands of people at every level of our population. The baby boomer bubble is putting pressure on senior housing, working families are crowded into two-bedroom apartments that they can barely afford, and our high schools have had to create dedicated staff positions just to deal with hundreds of homeless kids in our schools. Budgeting nothing is no help at all. Budgeting just a little helps just a little. If we really intend to address the shortage of affordable housing, we need a healthy and solid affordable housing trust fund. This afternoon, I, along with many others, received an email from our mayor. The subject of the email was "Proposed Budget Investment Running the City Well." In that email, the word "invest" or "investment" appeared 12 times. I submit that affordable housing is a need today, and it will certainly be a crying need tomorrow. Beacon's Nicollet Square is a shining example of successful affordable housing. Youth who were previously homeless now live in their own studio apartments. Local nonprofits who create housing know all too well that housing doesn't just happen, and when a building does happen, it's not overnight. Funding takes years. And when we approach funders, the first question asked, "Where is your startup grant? Who believes in you? Where's your kick in the pants?" If we are really serious about investing in the future of Minneapolis and investing in our downtown, $20 million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will be key to maximizing that investment. Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Washburn, thank you, Mr. Jeff Washburn, and then Darren Ziegler.
Thank you.
Jeff Washburn.
Thank you. Council President Johnson, councilmembers, Mayor Hodges. My name is Jeff Washburn. I live at 4440 Xerxes Avenue South, live in the 13th Ward, soon to be a resident of the 5th Ward, and I also serve as the Executive Director of the City of Lake's Community Land Trust. Every day I drive out of the well-off 13th Ward, through the affluent neighborhoods of the 7th Ward, and then into the impacted 5th Ward, where our offices are located. The real estate, economic, liability, and racial differences across these wards are significant, but the challenges to find affordable, responsible, sustainable housing in each of them are remarkably similar. Every neighborhood in the city has its own form of an affordable housing crisis, and I'm urging you to find a way to ensure $20 million is made available for housing in your 2015 budget. As of this coming December, we will assist 200 homeowners achieve affordable, responsible, sustainable homeownership in our city. The way we do that is we create ownership for households that otherwise would never have been able to purchase a home. If and when they ever go to sell their homes, we ensure that we can keep those homes affordable for another income-qualified household. And then lastly, and perhaps most importantly, if we help somebody get into homeownership, we want to be there to ensure that they're successful in that homeownership experience, making sure that we're there as a support mechanism through tough and good times. These homeowners represent over 10 million in public affordability and rehab investments, some of which has been funded through past CDBG, NSP, and home funding through the city of Minneapolis. In 2014, our organization has busted our tails in raising close to $2 million from the state of Minnesota and from Hennepin County. And I got to think that these funders are not going to be as willing to entertain future investments, knowing that the local municipality might be pulling back from their commitment to affordable housing. So why is it important to fund? Leverage. Over the life of our organization, we've now seen 30 resales. In each and every one of those instances, we've been able to keep those homes affordable. Equity. City Minneapolis residents, 40% represent community of color households, only 13% though are homeowners. We're serving over 50% of the homeowners that we serve are community of color households. And then foreclosures. We've only seen eight over the last 10 years. Land trust homeowners are 50% less likely to get into foreclosure than the average Minneapolis homeowner. In closing, I've had the opportunity to meet with many of you over the last several months, and I've also shared that there are several policy tools and funding tools that I believe the city has in its toolbox, tools that are being used by other great cities across this country. The city is beginning to prosper again, real estate values are increasing, and more and more of our residents are getting left behind. We look forward to each of you to be bold in your support of affordable housing. Thank you.
Darren Ziegler, and then Barbara Lightsey. Mr. Ziegler, Ms. Lightsey then, and then Duri Mohammed.
I'm Barbara Lightsey. I live at 4018 Fremont Avenue North, Minneapolis. I'm one of those 200 homeowners Jeff just mentioned. I bought my house in '06. Without the land trust, I would not have been able to buy a home. Minneapolis currently has 40% of its homeowners are people of color. Of the 200 of the land trust, 40% are homeowners. I'm here to support the information that Jeff just gave you. The land trust has been a good steward for the city of Minneapolis. It's been a good steward in that it has provided opportunities for low and moderate-income individuals and families to own homes. We ask that you hear us and that you support our request in order that more people of color can in fact enjoy the luxury of homeownership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lightsey. Duri Mohammed, and then Gail Dorfman. Mr. Mohammed? Ms. Dorfman? Then Jim Gertmannian, excuse me, Ms. Dorfman. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and Council President Johnson, and members for this opportunity to comment on the city budget. I'm Gail Dorfman. I live at 4200 Forest Road in St. Louis Park, and I'm the Executive Director of St. Stevens Human Services. We serve 9,000 people in Minneapolis. Every year who are homeless are at risk of becoming homeless through street outreach, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, support services, and community engagement. And we could not do this work to end homelessness without your support. Your funding for our street outreach team helps move single adults from streets into housing. Your support for high-needs families makes it possible to get families out of homeless shelters in Minneapolis into stable housing. Thank you so much for your continued support. Ending homelessness takes a multi-system, multi-sector approach, and that's what we've done in Minneapolis, across levels of government, and in partnership with the business, faith, and nonprofit sectors. We've seen reductions in the number of adults who are chronically homeless, and in the number of homeless veterans, and we're beginning to see progress too in reducing the number of homeless families who make up the majority of all people experiencing homelessness. At its core, homelessness is the result of the gap between what people can spend on housing and the cost of a place to live. It's as simple as that. For homeless single adults, their monthly median income is 400. Median monthly rent is 800. For homeless families, their median monthly income is 562. The fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment is 904. The math just doesn't work. We do not have a sufficient supply of housing that people with very low incomes can afford. And while we've made progress, there are still more than 2,000 people tonight in our Minneapolis shelters, and 250 people unsheltered on our streets. We work every day at St. Stevens to move people out of shelter and off the streets, but we could move faster and do more, as could other nonprofits, if there was more affordable housing in both Minneapolis and in our suburban communities. We've seen that making the right investments and targeting them well gets real results. City investment in affordable housing, you know, will lead to better outcomes in the health, education, safety, and economy of our community, and will move us closer to ending homelessness. Thank you for your support and for your good work.
Thank you. Jim Gertmannian, and after he, David Burdine.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council Chair Johnson. My name is Jim Gertmannian. I am the Senior Minister of Plymouth Congregational Church, and I am a Minneapolis resident living at 2441 Pleasant Avenue. As you know, except for its first year, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has been chronically underfunded, always below its $10 million goal. Rents are rising, the building industry is booming. Every year, Minneapolis becomes a more desirable place to live. As a result, people with lower incomes are being forced to leave their homes. That makes our city poorer, not richer. We want Minneapolis to be a place where people of all incomes are able to live and thrive. As one of the clergy, senior clergy of the Minneapolis faith congregations that make up downtown congregations to end homelessness, and as one of the founders of Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative, and as a co-chair of Heading Home Hennepin, it has been my privilege to work with some of you, as well as a host of others, to bring about the day when homelessness is a thing of our past. To get to that day, we depend on your leadership, on your courageous leadership, and we look to you now to help ensure that current residents are able to maintain their residency in Minneapolis rather than being forced out by higher rents. We've said it again and again, all of us, you and we together, that everyone in our city deserves a safe, affordable, and decent place to live. In our city, around 500 children and youth stayed in shelters last night with their parents, or without them. Nearly 1 in 10 children and youth in the Minneapolis school system are homeless or highly mobile, 1 in 10. These are not someone else's children, they are our children. The values that have made this city great, including the sense that we are morally responsible for the most vulnerable among us, those are the values that should guide us now. Please, take this opportunity to provide $20 million for affordable rental housing and homeownership. Please take this opportunity to protect the economic diversity of our community. Please, take this opportunity to invest in affordable housing, knowing that the return on such an investment, financially, socially, and morally, will be incalculable. Every now and then, the most compassionate thing to do, and the smartest thing to do, are the same thing. This is one of those times. Thank you for your commitment to all the people of Minneapolis.
Thank you. David Burdine, followed by Latricia Batal. Perhaps saying that wrong. Mr. Burdine?
I'm David Burdine, the Senior Minister at First Unitarian Society, 900 Mount Curve, one of the 14 members of downtown congregations to end homelessness. My congregation has had three locations since 1881, all downtown, and we have a strong self-identity as an urban congregation. We want to be here. We employ two custodians, political refugees from Guatemala. They can't go back. We pay them fairly, but they send much of their pay to support family in Guatemala. These custodians, Cirilo and Felipe, can't afford a car. They ride their bikes to work, or they walk. So, they have to live close by. How do they afford rent? The answer is barely, and creatively, and many working people know that. In the Unitarian religious tradition, we teach the inherent worth and dignity of every person. What is dignity? The starting point is stable housing. A worker making $8 an hour has to work 91 hours per week to pay for a two-bedroom apartment. Stable families have stable housing, and as Jim said, 1 in 10 of the students in Minneapolis' public schools is homeless. We can't change our weather, but we can change this problem.
Ms., is it Batal? I'm sorry.
It's Latricia Vita.
Vita, nice to meet you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
And then the next person, excuse me, will be Brian Miller. Go ahead, Ms. Batal.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, councilmembers. My name's Latricia Vita, 2301 Fourth Avenue North, that's Ward 5. I also work in Ward 5 at North Point Health and Wellness Center, and I'm here tonight in support of protected bike lanes. As a part of my job at North Point, over the summer, a part of many of my jobs at North Point, I had the pleasure of working with NICE Ride on the Orange Bikes, so the community program, not the green bikes. It was a separate program that I worked with. And in that program, I recruited 64 North Side residents to participate in that pilot program. And as a part of that pilot program, we are introducing those people to bike riding, using cycling as a form of transportation outside of buses, outside of cars, but as a form of main transportation. And then that, a lot of the sessions that we held, there was a lot of fear in being safe in traffic and riding bikes in North Minneapolis. And so, in my opinion, supporting safe lanes would be a health equity issue, because in my job, I'm encouraging people to try new things, exercise, try new things like biking as a part of their lifestyle. And so, it's a natural fit that we encourage them to do so while feeling safe. So, I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight on how important it is to protect bike lanes, and also to encourage you to remember to protect bike lanes, and to remember to support protecting bike lanes and the city's funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Miller, and then Allison Sharkey. Sharkey? Okay. Okay, Ms. Sharkey?
Council President Johnson, councilmembers. I'm Allison Sharkey. I live in Powderhorn Park in the 9th Ward, and I'm also the Executive Director of Lake Street Council. And I'm also here on behalf of a number of organizations that implement the city's Great Streets program. And I want to thank you for your robust support of the Business Technical Assistance, or BTAP, program. It's a really important program that Lake Street Council has used this year, which has, we've used it to help retain eight businesses, meaning 49 jobs retained, and we have also helped attract two new businesses, and helped two businesses expand to additional locations, which totaled an additional 14 new jobs. The two programs that we're concerned about with the lack of Great Streets allocation this year are the Facade Improvement Program and the Business District Support Program. CPED had requested $500,000 for the program to maintain current levels of investment, and $0 were allocated in next year's budget. Part of that was because of an error that assumed that there was more available to carry over into next year than there actually will be due to 2014 expenditures. The facade program is a great program that addresses blight and ensures quality materials and design on our commercial corridors. Over the last four years, we've used it to help provide investment to 58 businesses who have in turn invested 1.4 million of their own dollars in, which is an investment of seven private dollars for every one city dollar. The Business District Support Program is also a really important program that a number of organizations use to help implement some of the city's goals. We provide marketing support to our commercial corridors, help fill vacant properties, conduct business-to-business training workshops, and connect many business owners with city programs and services. So I encourage you to work with CPED and figure out how many dollars are needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky George, followed by Catherine Winju. Ms. George?
Yes. Good evening, President Johnson, Mayor Hodges, and councilmembers. My name is Becky George. I live at 2615 Park Avenue, and I'm lucky to be within walking distance of my job with the Neighborhood Development Center at the Midtown Global Market. I'm the Communications, Marketing, and Property Manager there. Before that, in 1999, I was fortunate enough to have a business in Mercado Central, which I feel was one of the very first projects along Lake Street that started the revitalization of Lake Street. And with that revitalization, I think we saw a lot of smaller businesses then coming to Lake Street and investing with that. My work with the Neighborhood Development Center is twofold. Not only is it with our investments along Lake Street, Mercado Central, Plaza Verde, and the Midtown Global Market, we also have, we work a lot with business owners, with the technical assistance, and a lot of the people along Lake Street have benefited by the facade improvement grants that were available with the city. One of the things that, well, in fact, this past year, the Global Market was able to spruce up at least the front of the building with the facade improvement grant. And I think what's important about this is it isn't an outright grant where the business owners are receiving something for nothing. They have skin in the game as well, part of the- Part of the investment that they have is matched with this facade improvement grant. So, I would urge you to fund the Great Streets grant at least consistent with the 2014 budget, which was a little under $1 million. It's important to the infrastructure of our commercial corridors in all parts of the city. Thank you.
Catherine Winju, and then Mary McGovern, next.
Hi, thank you to the mayor and to the council members. My name is Catherine Windick, and I live at 2403rd Street Northeast in Minneapolis. I'm here to support the funding for protected bike lanes in the budget. Four years ago, I randomly decided to try bike commuting to my job at the U of M from Northeast. I decided to try this because West River Road would take me basically from Northeast directly to the U. I had never really thought about bike commuting before. I thought that it looked really scary, being in the road with cars, terrifying. So, having this separated protected bikeway made it possible for me to start commuting to work, and I've since become a very hardcore commuter, still going so far. When I talk to people about bike commuting, they tell me that they're afraid of cars. Number one, that's their main concern. And so, that's why I want to support protected bike lanes, to see more of them put into the city. I want them to be able to experience the economic benefits that I've experienced, the happiness that I get from biking, the health benefits, the environmental benefits, all of these things. I want them to be able to experience that, and if we put more protected bike lanes in, more people will start biking because they'll see that it looks like a safe thing they can try. You know, they're going to see kids on protected bike lanes, and they're going to say, "I could try that." And they'll get hooked, and they'll love it, and it'll be great. I'm excited to see improved connections between Northeast and downtown, North Minneapolis and the U of M. It makes me, the bike infrastructure in Minneapolis makes me not want to ever move away. So, you know, I think that's important too for keeping people in the city. It also made me care about what's happening with the city. I would never thought I'd be testifying at a budget hearing, so that's also another benefit. It can get people involved and interested in what's going on with things. Thank you very much.
Mary McGovern, and next is Mohammed Awad. Ms. McGovern?
Good evening. My name is Mary McGovern. I'm Treasurer of the Minneapolis High Rise Representative Council, the citywide public housing high-rise tenant organization, representing over 5,000 Minneapolis citizens living in 42 high-rises managed by MPHA. I have been a resident at 1225 South East Street for eight years, currently serve as a resident council president and project lookout coordinator. Security is residence's number-one priority and have been for many years. Our buildings are comprised of over 70% elderly and disabled residents, many with mental issues, who are especially vulnerable to crime and fear of crime. Over 200 project lookout volunteers citywide help improve safety and the feeling of security among residents, but more help is needed. As you may know, the mill levy for MPHA allowed, under state law, provide about $1.2 million to MPH annually over 20 years. The levy was not requested by MPHA in 2010 because he had received one-time allotment of federal stimulus money, and was expecting full federal operating subsidies that year. The levy was never reinstated. Despite requests for the funds from MPHA and in subsequent years, and despite the fact that MPHA capital and operating funds have shrunk in recent years due to federal budget impasses and subsequentions, the loss of the mill levy resulted in MPHA slashing their guard hours by 60% in 2012, and they have remained that level ever since. Many residents feel that city has abandoned public housing and public housing residents. We implore you to restore the mill levy for MPHA. Yes, the federal government should be adequately supporting public housing needs, but they are not, and we would like to see the city step up to play it again to help keep our buildings safe and livable. Many of our buildings and their systems are for 50 years old and drastic need of major repairs, as you can see in our pictures. MPHA reports that the backlog of over $80 million in critical elevator, electrical, and plumbing work needs to be repaired, need to be done. Restoring the levy at the full amount allowed by state law would provide close to $3 million each year. Both security and building repair work could be reported by this levy. If not this year, then please begin a serious discussion for next year's budget. As I said earlier, project lookout volunteers have stepped up to help fill the gap left by security and funding cuts. Over 200 resident volunteers contribute over 64,000 hours a year in 29 high-rises to help keep our community safe. We request that the city provide $30,000 for project lookout organizing efforts in its 2015 budget. Thank you.
Mohammed Awad, and then Molly Sullivan. Mr. Awad?
I'm here to translate for him.
Pardon me?
I'm here to translate for him.
All right, go ahead.
Mohammed Awad, 1627 Cedar Street.
My name is Mohammed Awad. I live in 1627 South Cedar Street, actually 6th Street.
With this cold weather, the reason I came out to here is to talk to you about the problem we have in the public housing, our buildings.
I'm responsible about the four high-rises and buildings on Cedar, and the people, and I will speak on behalf of the people who live, the residents who live there. We have a safety issue with the older people and the vulnerable groups who are resident in public housing, and since the security guard has been cut, we have been difficult with our safety for our older people, our vulnerable people. I'm requesting the public housing security to be funded back the way it should be it was before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Molly Sullivan, and then Don Sherwood. Ms. Sullivan?
Hello, everyone. My name is Molly Sullivan. This is Teddy Rockwell. We live at 132 West 35th Street in Councilmember Gliddon's Ward. We're here tonight to talk about two aspects of the mayor's budget, which we really support, although I support many, many aspects of the budget. We're here to talk about our support for protected bike lanes. Teddy goes to daycare in downtown Minneapolis. We live in south Minneapolis, and I work for Minneapolis Public Schools, so my office is in north, but I'm all over the city every day. We depend on walking and biking and transit to get around, and I'd really like to start biking with him, but I'm really afraid. So, my voice is all shaky, sorry. So, we are so excited that the mayor wants to help us get around the city safely, and we hope that you all support Teddy's safety and my safety by supporting the budget allocation for protected bike lanes. I'd also like to say thank you to the mayor for proposing corner clearing. When you have to push a stroller, it makes a huge difference. It's not a very sexy part of the budget, but it's a very important part of the budget. So, we hope that you all enthusiastically support protected bike lanes. Sorry about the shaky voice. Thank you.
You did great. Thank you. Don Sherwood, and then Harry Reynolds.
My name is Donald Sherwood, and I heard about this meeting at my parish, St. Olaf Downtown. I live in St. Paul at 2294 Marshall Avenue, and I'm an 83-year-old senior citizen who's very concerned about the housing for the poor and the homeless problem we have. And I don't know if $20 million is enough to end homelessness, but if it isn't, then I suggest we raise the figure. If it has mean raising taxes, I would do it. And it seems to me if we can find $1 billion to build a new stadium for the Vikings, this should not be a problem at all. Thank you.
Joshua Hudak, and then Eddie Chambers?
Hi, I'm Happy Reynolds. I live at 19- I'm sorry, excuse me. That's okay. I live at 1912 15th Avenue South, that's Ward 6. I'm actually not here with any nonprofit, I'm just here as a citizen. So, I am actually, I think you guys have a hard job. I like a lot of the mayor's budget. I actually like a lot of the things that people are talking about here. I guess as a citizen, what I'm asking you guys to do is please look at things in the budget that first are pathways to homeownership and affordable housing for all of the people in our community, regardless of class. I live in a neighborhood, I think there are five languages on my block. It is an amazing place, it is a wonderful place. I'm from Minneapolis, I lived in San Francisco for many years, and I watched as the housing prices rose, both in rental and in ownership, almost every community of color get priced out. And I think when we talk about growing the population of the city, when we talk about stadiums, when we talk about revitalization, we sometimes forget that what that means is, you know, my property value is going to go up, I own my house, I'm going to be there, but I would like my neighbors to be there with me. They have stayed in that neighborhood through the tough times, they deserve to have a pathway to homeownership or stable renting when we are actually having good times. So, I guess when you're looking at the budget, I would ask you to look at what provides stable housing for people of every ethnicity and class, and then also what provides jobs, because we need jobs for people in our city, and we need jobs for every person regardless so that we can actually go towards equity. So, thank you very much for being here on a cold night, and thank you for hearing me. And I guess my question for the bike lane, or my plea for the bike lane people would be protected bike lanes for people like me who have to work in Coon Rapids and can't actually bike there. I think there's, that would be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Joshua Hudak? Mr. Hudak?
Good evening. Thank you, President Johnson, and Mayor Hodges, and council members. My name is Joshua Hudak. I live at 2820 37th Avenue South in Minneapolis. I work for the Sierra Club as a Land Use and Transportation Program Manager. The Sierra Club is oldest and largest environmental, grassroots environmental advocacy organization in the country. I'm here to support bikeways, protected bikeways specifically, and I, but I'm also a father of a two-year-old daughter who was going to be here, and then grandmother swooped in and saved her from another public meeting. But I also drive, and I take the bus and the light rail, but as I mentioned, I ride my bike. I rode here tonight, one of the few bikes out there collecting snow. But I won't ride with my daughter in much of the city, and I hope, as you heard from someone else this evening, I hope to do more of that in the future. Bicycling is a proven way to get more people bicycling, sorry, protected bikeways is a proven way of getting more people biking. The more people biking means a healthier community for all of us, it means cleaner air for all of us. It also is good for business. We know this, that, you know, when I choose to ride my bike, I stop more often and stop at local businesses, opposed to driving quickly on my bike or even in transit. Protected bikeways will help grow One Minneapolis in a sustainable way. And that leads me to my next and last point, and that is, it's a global warming solution. The Minneapolis Climate Action Plan that y'all passed has specifically in it 30 new miles of protected bikeways by 2020. We're never going to get there without some initial funding for specific protected bikeway projects, so I urge you to retain that in the budget, and thank you for your time.
Eddie Chambers, and then Ethan Frawley? Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, Councilman, President Council Johnson, I'm Eddie Chambers, and I'm with Aon, an organization called Aon, I live at 1801 Avenue South. I just, I'm here, I come out because I can't help but to stress the importance of the support that we need for housing. I mean, there's so many homeless people here that's out here, and with the weather changing the way it is, I firmly believe that people, when people have a home, something they can belong to, it changes their way of thinking. You know, instead of thinking singularly, they can think, "Hey, I live here now," they'll take pride in their neighborhoods, some of them for the first time. If they get a place where they own, it's the first time they've ever even had something. So, now they drop the street thinking, they start thinking like, "Hey, I own this, I live here, this is my area, I can clean this up." Now, we can take better pride in where we live. It's a problem that I can't even begin to scratch the surface of. I implore you guys, please, help us out, we need this so much. As a person that has walked that path myself, I know it's no fun, but I was blessed and fortunate enough to come into an organization that cares about it. See, we at Aon, we have a simple philosophy, everybody deserves a home no matter what. And we don't think that they should have to be homeless simply because they happen to be poor and don't have anything. So, I honestly believe people that have a home, it changes their thinking, and the power is in us, especially you, especially within you guys, to help us out here. I implore you, I beg you to please consider, this is very important, we can make home happen. Thank you.
Ethan Frawley, and then LaShella Sims. Mr. Frawley?
Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Ethan Frawley. I'm the Executive Director of the Minneapolis Bicycle Coalition. I also live at 2929 Chicago Avenue South. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the funding proposed for protected bike lanes. As you know, as Joshua Hudak mentioned, the city adopted a goal of building 30 new miles of protected bike lanes by 2020. That goal cannot be reached if we do not start investment now. We've been out talking to people, this is a new idea. There are a lot of public benefits that come with investing in protected bike lanes, that's why the city adopted the goal. I'm not going to talk about that, I'm going to talk about the public support that exists for protected bike lanes. This is a newer concept, we only have, we don't, we have about a mile of protected bike lanes in the city right now, and, but we've been getting a really enthusiastic support as we've been out talking to people around the city. So, after Thanksgiving, I'm going to come deliver your constituents' messages to you. This is over 3,000 postcards that our volunteers and Sierra Club volunteers and other partner volunteers have collected, of people who say, "I want to see a network of 30 new miles of protected bike lanes built in the city by 2020." I want to just read a couple of the comments that are on these cards, they're different messages. Melissa says, "I want to ride with my three-year-old to pick up from school and get groceries." While Emily says, "I want to ride with my child but avoid biking because I fear for his safety." Kathy says, "At 63, I need protection to keep me riding for many years to come." Sharon says, "I don't have enough biking skill to ride between parked cars and passing cars. I could bike more with protected lanes." Karly says, "I want to feel safer when I bike, and I want my neighbors to feel that biking is safe, effective, easy way to get around." And Corinne says, "It helps the environment quality of life and reduces poverty by connecting people without cars to more options for workplaces." So, just a few sampling, you'll get yours after Thanksgiving. I also want to say thank you to the mayor, and I hope you'll support the funding for snow maintenance, and I'm very supportive of the change and the addition of a transportation policy division within public works. Thank you all. See if I can avoid some kind of tragedy on the way out.
LaShella Sims, and then Alan Arthur?
Greetings, council members. I'm LaShella Sims, a lead organizer with MICA, Metropolitan Interfaith Council on Affordable Housing. I live at 915 Upton Avenue North, Minneapolis. I wanted also to introduce you to, and MICA's strong supporters of One Family, One Community is grassroots, bottom-on-the-ground, boots-on-the-ground organization that's working towards reclaiming vacant properties that they can rehab and live in, and thereby becoming citizens that will contribute to all our tax bases. And with that, in terms of MICA, the priority needs are more money for affordable housing in every neighborhood. in every neighborhood, under economic development, not just the acquisition and demolition for developers, but also for organizations like One Family, One Community, for them to be able to buy those homes at very, very, very low prices, so that they can rehab them and live in them. Under rental housing, rental housing for racially mixed and white communities. And under the, I took your stuff off the web, under planning administration that civil rights regarding fair housing must be enforced and expanded on. Rental housing, speaking of the home program, that monies be used for rent subsidies. And our veterans, I'm also organizing for Black Vets of America, and per capita, the most black vets nationally live in North Minneapolis. And at, during, after World War II, Housing for HUD came out of needing housing for vets at that time. And so I'm, I think that, what about our vets now? Aren't they just as valuable and an asset to us now? Why not have housing for them? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Alan Arthur, and then Damian Tank. Mr. Arthur?
Council Chair, Mayor Hodges, City Council Members. My name is Alan Arthur, I live in Oro, I work for an organization, Aon, that has 2,200 units of affordable housing, about a quarter of that, 550 for homeless people who have average incomes of $15,800. By the way, we paid about $1.5 million for the taxes to the city of Minneapolis last year, I think, and really, truthfully, Aon didn't pay that, the renters who have annual incomes of $15,800 paid most of those, that $1.5 million for the taxes. So, home is pretty high on the need scale for human beings. Air, water, food, home, love is right in there, somewhere in that ballpark. Just wanna leave you, a lot of folks have said great things tonight, I just wanna leave you with a couple of facts. One is on the sheet of paper you have in front of you, 50,000 people below the poverty level paying more than 30% of their income, half of them over 50% of their meager income for their housing. We're a city that wants to grow. And the second fact is, we do not have hardly any more affordable housing in the city of Minneapolis today than we had 25 years ago, I wanna repeat that. Dozens of us have been working to provide affordable housing in this city for those 25 years, and we have hardly more affordable units, handful, couple hundred, 300 more affordable units in the city than we had 25 years ago. We cannot add 100,000 people to the city over the next 20, 25 years if we don't do something on this front. We're headed down a very bad path unless we are very aggressive on this front. You have hard jobs, I appreciate them, thank you for your work, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Damian Tank, and then Alexis Penny?
Hello, my name is Damian Tank, I live at 4105 Elliott Avenue. I also wanna speak to the importance of sustainable affordable housing, not just being able to find affordable housing once, but to be able to keep it as a sustainable thing to rely on for the rest of your life. I'm lucky enough to be one of the 200 people that the City of Lakes Community Land Trust helped. My wife and I bought a house in 2011 in the Bancroft neighborhood, and I grew up in Minneapolis, and I've always had the dream of owning a house here and living here, long-term, and so I'm happy that they were able to help me. But it's so important that that continues to be a sustainable thing for more people. I've been very lucky to be able to be a part of it, and it's very important that more people who are less fortunate than me are also able to find that, to achieve that goal. One of the things that the land trust does that's so important is not only helping people on the path to homeownership, but making sure that that home is a sound place to live, that it's, that there's an initial investment of rehab funds to make sure that that house is a safe place for a long time. And with that investment comes roots in our Minneapolis community and in our neighborhood, the consistency for our family to know where we're going to be on a long-term basis, and with that comes the great benefits to the younger generations, educationally, and just in terms of the consistency of knowing where they're going to be and how important that is. And thank you for your time. I also support protected bike lanes, and my testimony for that is that I would like to be able to bike down Cedar Avenue from Franklin to 24th Street without white knuckles by 24th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alexis Penny, and then Milton Manning?
Good evening, Mayor Hodges, Council President Johnson, council members. I'm here in support of protected bike lanes. Specifically, I acknowledge that a lot of residents, council members, have issues with maybe delays in funding to like public art, protected bike lanes, and some other issues that are coming up in the budget such as redirected funds to neighborhoods. And I understand those criticisms, I was actually here just yesterday testifying with regard to rededicating or redirecting funds to neighborhoods, and asking whether or not using the Consolidated TIF district was a good idea in terms of funding the Upper Harbor Terminal or the Communications Department. And so, and where I live in North Minneapolis, obviously, public safety is a huge concern. I definitely understand that. Most recently, there was a shooting about three blocks away from my home, so obviously I think that's a real concern. And however, I also believe that protected bike lanes are a smart investment for the city of Minneapolis, and I support that component in the budget. And I think it's a false choice to say that we need to choose either between public safety or protected bike lanes, or bike lanes in general, because I know that public safety is a broad term, and protected bike lanes fit within that category. So again, what we wanna do is provide more opportunities for safe biking, increase access to recreation amenities, and bring better park and trail access to North Minneapolis. Obviously, it's extremely important to me. I'm pleased to see that the budget provides $750,000 toward that network of protected bike lanes, as well as snow management for the lanes. And I think it's additionally important that we're making sure that we're investing in disenfranchised, low-income communities, and also considering the impact that that'll have on property taxes, that'll have on growing our community, or city I should say, economic development, as well as health and equity. So, and also, this is kind of a side thing, I sincerely recommend the city kinda look at specific protected bike lanes in North Minneapolis. For example, working with your colleagues at Pennobin County, on Washington Avenue North, Second Street North, I think it's a crucial connection, specifically to the north loop to downtown Minneapolis, southeast Minneapolis, and the Greenway that connects to the University of Minnesota. I would argue that it's probably one of our most direct connections to downtown. Protected bike lanes, in addition to some intersection enhancements, would go a long way to improving the vitality of these corridors, especially as it relates to future bike trails along the east side of the river, as well as the west side of the river.
Can you finish up, Mr. Penny?
Absolutely. In conclusion, I hope to have, continue this conversation. And we wanna make sure that Minneapolis is a city that works for both economically challenged communities and affluent communities, and we wanna see a community, we wanna make sure that we're keeping our residents safe, and that we're addressing health disparities through transportation investments that connect communities and help make our community function better. Thank you so much for your time, I do appreciate it.
Mr. Milton Manning, and then Andy Caldwell?
Hello, I'm back again. My name is Milton Manning, I'm at 3325 Second. I'm with One Family, One Community as the VEP rep, I'm also with the Poor People's Campaign Minneapolis as a VEP rep. I'm also the board, a board member of Can Do, and I'm just here to support this budget because the people in the neighborhood need this. There's a such thing as affordable housing, but we need to address the low, low-income families, because it's kinda hard to make rent, when rent is double what you're making. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Andy Caldwell? Caldwell?
Hi, thank you. First-time testifier, never been in this building before, it's cool.
It's your city hall.
Yeah, no kidding, 20 years. My name's Andy Caldwell, I live at 2436 Garfield Avenue, in uptown by the Co-op, the Wedge Co-op. I'm a biker, an avid biker for recreation and for commuting. I'm a winter biking enthusiast, so I don't do it, but I cheer them on. I'm fortunate enough to have a gorgeous bike ride to work every day, that I do do it. The Dinkytown Greenway, the Sixth Street Southeast along the new buildings and the U of M campus by TCF Bank Stadium, and the U of M Transit Way are all routes that I use. I'd like to support protected bike lanes, so that I can get more people involved in biking to work, or biking for recreation. It's hard for me to get my friends to bike with me for fun, they just don't feel safe doing it. And as a driver, I drive most days to work or around, so I also want to feel safe as a driver, so that I don't put other lives in danger. So this funding is pretty vital for the city, I think that it's important for tourists using nice rides, for my family when they come downtown and they rent bikes. And that's what makes the city great, is good bike lanes.
Thank you. Marcus Mills, and then Scott Campbell? Mr. Mills?
Hello. Hello, my name is Marcus Mills, I live at 309 Sixth Street Southeast in Minneapolis, in Apartment 109. And thank you, Mayor Hodges, Council President Johnson, and council members, thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts with you this evening. As some of you know from my comments yesterday, I represent the Marcy Holmes Neighborhood Association as a director. Tonight, I bring you a more personal take on the value of preserving the two-way split of Consolidated TIF district income as projections rise, funding our city's neighborhoods more as originally intended. When I think of the quality work that my neighborhood association has done on my behalf, and that of Minneapolis, maintaining and improving my way of life, that I was wholly unaware was transpiring all around me from behind the scenes, I am taken aback. From the littlest touches like the neighborhood community gardens and Sixth Avenue Greenway that greet me on my walks throughout the neighborhood as winter weather gives way to spring, to the more Herculean tasks that face the neighborhood in its service to its people and the city. Tasks like the stewardship of our city's historic character on the southeast Fifth Street, shepherding the Mississippi River Trail and corridor projects, making our green spaces and riverfront parks more accessible and enjoyable for our families and young people, promoting and curating numerous art installations of historic and aesthetic value. Also, let us not forget the environmental legacy of our late colleague Kelly Phillips, the Save Our Shade Trees Initiative, protecting many of Marcy Holmes' ash trees from Emerald Ash Borer parasites. These are, these and so many other interests are served by our neighborhoods, week by week, helping instill that exquisite feeling of home that we each take for granted as we close our commute each night. Even though the diligence, vigilance, and perseverance of volunteers helps streamline these initiatives and keeps them from, and keeps them functioning, it is the tireless work of staff and the material supplies and services bought and paid for by funding dollars like those we are discussing that makes such things possible.
Mr. Mills, can you wrap up, please?
Absolutely. Think what we could accomplish with a little more trust and a few more resources as the future provides them. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Campbell, and then Darian Ziegler? Nope, Scott Campbell, Darian Ziegler? Ishmael Israel? And then Duri Mohammed?
Good afternoon, everybody. Hi, my name is Darian Ziegler, I wanna apologize initially, because as you can see, I'm broken, so it takes a little bit longer for me to get around.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
It's okay. So, I come to you all today on behalf of the City of Lakes Community Land Trust. I purchased my home last year, so I've been in my home for one year. I live on 1915 E.M. Stately Street, that's right across from Little Earth of United Tribes. CLCLT has provided me the opportunity to be able to become a homeowner, and being Native American, that's something that we don't necessarily have. So, I just come to you all today asking that you provide us with more funding, because CLCLT has had a critical element in providing a better life for those of us who wouldn't be able to provide it on our own. So, a critical element of the housing initiative program has been able to assist homebuyers with a purchase with moderate rehab to their homes. And this critical funding has gone away, but there is very little in the city policy making it a priority in 2015's budget. That's why I'm coming to you today, to ask that you please help out more homebuyers be able to have this opportunity to have happiness with owning a home. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ishmael Israel, and then Duri Mohammed. Mr. Israel?
Good evening, Councilmember President, Mayor Hodges, City Council. I'll keep it a little more brief than last night. I'm here this evening representing the North Minneapolis Residence Redevelopment Council. We represent both Willard Hay and Near North in North Minneapolis. I, I, I'm here to support the people that are here, the people, the movements, that I've heard from, that I've worked with, these are, we're colleagues, and in many ways, we're family joined in service to the city. And organizations that, Jeff's organization, Community, City of Lakes Land Trust, Poor People's Campaign, these are viable ways to get residents engaged. They, without a, without a house, there's no way to get involved in Minneapolis boards, commissions, and task forces. There's just absolutely no way. So, I applaud the mayor in moving forward her agenda of One Minneapolis, and applying a racial equity lens to the budget as she put it together, and I just ask that you all continue, continue those efforts. One word of protected bikeways, we definitely support that in the neighborhood, I just ask that with all efforts that the city council and the mayor puts forward, that a robust community engagement process takes place in that, and that that community engagement process results with an open ear from city council and city leadership. Protected bikeways can in many ways spur economic development, but also it cannot be done, it cannot be done at the cost of businesses. And specifically, I'm speaking of North Minneapolis, Northside Residence Redevelopment Council has, has done some engagement, and we want to make sure that if we have bus rapid transit coming down Penn, and we're very adamant and looking forward to the economic development that it's gonna spur, and do not want businesses to lose their parking as a result. So, thank you for all your efforts, you all, you all are doing well in your first year, not taking away from the veterans on the council, and thank you, Mayor Hodges, in your first year as well, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Israel. Duri Mohammed, and then Monica Nielsen. Mr. Mohammed?
My name is Duri Mohammed, I'm, my first time to the city hall. I come from the Voilas community, people being tortured and killed, I was being ended up in Minneapolis. I was joined Land Trust, I was suffering, struggling to helping my brothers and sisters over CC, and then this affordable housing program helping me, and then I get it, I was living 2818 Grand Street, I'm happy. But I need one thing to address as a community member, as a Romo or Somali community member. Our family members, they are moving every single day from the city because of affordable housing. Nobody cannot listen, Somalis and Romos. We have, our family size a little bit bigger, public housing, they are kicking out. Please, council, consider about this affordable housing, I'm happy my way. Land Trust community, they're helping me, I was referring a lot of peoples, they're helping a lot of people too. We need affordable housing program for our city. We lose thousand student every month move in other city because affordable housing. Trust me, I was working for simple public school last 20 years. Our family, if there was public house kicking them, they move another city. We need affordable housing, please, consider about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Monica Nielsen, and then Tom Weiss?
Monica Nielsen, 2309 Nicollet Avenue South.
Monica Nielsen, 2309 Nicollet Avenue South. Mayor Hodges, Council President Johnson, council members, thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Latasha.
Hi, my name is Tiffany. Hello, my name is Sandra.
Hi, my name is Tiffany. I needed emergency shelter. I was calling to find out if you have shelter for me and my two kids.
Hi, my name is Victoria, and I'm looking for emergency shelter.
I was calling for shelter for me and four people in my family.
I'm a single father with a 14-year-old daughter looking for a place. I've called for emergency family shelter. I have two twins.
I'm with my client Mary Ann today, and she has six children, five boys and one daughter, and she is going to be in need of housing.
Hi, my name is Charlie. We are faced with an eviction. I have two children. I had lost a job, got laid off, so we've lost home rent and some other issues that have happened because of the loss of this job that was a good job.
And I'm calling about emergency shelter for me and my two-and-a-half-year-old son.
My family is in emergency need of housing.
Yes, my name is Crystal, and I'm homeless. I have three children.
Hi, my name is Natasha. Can you give me a call? I'm homeless and I'm sleeping in my car.
And I currently have one child who's 10 months old.
I am seeking shelter. I'm four-and-a-half months pregnant.
It's me and my 16-month-old daughter.
I have four kids, and yes, I'm looking for shelter.
And it's me and my fiance and our four kids.
I have to leave this building today because the landlord didn't renew his license.
We were a large family of seven, but as a result of this happening, we are separating. We've let some things go mainly each other.
And I currently have one child.
Me, my three children, and my boyfriend.
Or any type of housing, like as soon as possible. One parent, four children, all under the age of seven. If you can give me a call back at your earliest convenience, that'd be great. Thanks. Because I can't stay here either. She just let me use the phone. Thank you. Could you please have me? Bye-bye, and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Nielsen. Tom Weiss, and then Becky Franklin. Mr. Weiss?
Hi, my name's Tom Weiss. I live at 895 19th Avenue Southeast. I'm here to talk about homes as well, but a different issue. I'm the vice chair of Southeast Seniors, which is one of a handful of Minneapolis block nurse programs. We help people stay in their homes. We provide subsidized medical care in the home for people who can't get out of their home. We provide care for things that Medicare doesn't cover. Medicare doesn't cover chronic conditions. It doesn't pay for things like foot care. It's surprising how many people can no longer reach their feet. We provide home visitors for people who can't get out of the home. We provide raking. We provide rides for people who need them to get into appointments. We used to, the block nurse programs in Minneapolis used to get funding from the city, and that funding was well-spent. Every year, Southeast Seniors helps about 50 additional people stay in their homes. That saves everyone a lot of money, because once they have to lose, leave their homes, everyone spends more money for that. And we used to get what would be a very small amount of money from this, from the city, about 10,000 bucks. The bang for the buck was good. I think it's in the city's interest to look at, to do that again for Southeast Seniors and the other block nurse programs. It would make the citizens a lot healthier. It would make our neighbor, help our neighborhoods stay together, because people, old people are a part of our fabric as well, and it would save all of us some money. On another note, from 1977 until last August, I was commuter bicyclist year-round. Bike lanes work. Once people get started, it's hard to give it up. You can do it a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Franklin, and then that is the list that I have. So if other people want to speak, we'll ask after Ms. Franklin. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Becky Franklin. I'm the vice chair of the Minneapolis Arts Commission, and on behalf of the commission, we would like to address our position around the proposal to pause funding for public art in 2015. Our mission is chartered in 1974 is to strengthen the arts and enrich the cultural life in Minneapolis. In our analysis, dedicating no new funding to public art in 2015 would seriously compromise this mission for a number of reasons. One, it sets a dangerous precedent. For more than 30 years, the percent for art funding has been a tradition. A pause of one year sends a message that this funding is not critical and paves the way for the funding to be reallocated more easily in future years. We would love to see the percent for art funding put into policy, as it is in St. Paul and many other cities that highly value their arts. Another reason is no new funding in 2015 means that the regular, ongoing activities of public art can't happen. These include conservation of emergency repair of the city's existing public art collection. Maintaining the collection demonstrates pride in and respect for the city's artistic assets. No funding also means that 2015 capital projects like the 29th Street reconstruction or the Webber Park renovation do not include public art, a missed opportunity for the city to enhance its creative identity and bolster its creative economy. Another reason is no new funding for public art in the same year that Minneapolis is creating its next long-range plan for the arts, culture, and creative economy undermines the trust of the arts community and sends a message that the city is not serious about its commitment to its arts and artists. And finally, the 16 members of the Minneapolis Arts Commission urge you all to demonstrate strong support for the city's arts and culture sector by funding public art at 1% or 2% of the net debt bond, funding arts, culture, and the creative economy, and by committing to a demonstrable reciprocal relationship with artists that advances racial equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and thank you all for joining us this evening, taking time to come down, in particular, is a public benefit. So thank you very, very much. A copy of the mayor's budget is on the city's website, mayor's proposed budget, and it's been on there since August 29th. The Ways and Means Committee chaired by Councilmember Quincy has been hearing from individual departments about each department's budget request and the mayor's response, and all of that has been broadcast on public access television, which you can access if you have cable, and also on the city's website. The documentation that's related to the proposed budget is also published and available on the city's website. So tonight, again, I want to thank you for joining us, and that we will have the final public hearing on the proposed 2015 budget is scheduled for Wednesday, December 10th, here in this chamber, beginning again at 6:05 PM. Following that hearing, the city council is scheduled to vote on the mayor's proposed budget package. And between now and then, the budget committee will, the budget subcommittee will complete its work in reviewing and marking up the mayor's proposed budget. Those meetings are also broadcast on public access television and on the city's website. So members of the public also who would like to submit comments for the record of tonight's hearing can continue to do so by using the comment link on the city's website or by sending email directly to citycouncilcomment@minneapolismn.gov. We will continue to accept comments for the record through December 9th. And if you need assistance with submitting materials for the record, please contact the city clerk's office at 673-2216, or see Mr. Carl over here at the end. So I want to thank you again for joining us this evening, and a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.